And within a few months of the academy, she was released.
To address what Cindy mentioned too, there are layers in the training. There's pre-academy, there's academy, there's post-academy. There is a lot of oversight in the field training process. So that vetting happens. I mean, we always take a chance on every employee we make an offer to because they might look good in the process, but the reality of when they land with us, that might not be a good fit. So there's a lot of layers to the process. And we would not be advocating, I don't think that Brad, myself, anybody on the department would have thought we would have found ourselves in the hiring environment that we are, that we would have experienced some of the things as far as candidates, you know, halfway through the academy, I don't think I want to do this anymore. Candidates finishing the academy, candidates being unsuccessful at the academy. We have had experiences that have prompted us to go in this direction because we believe it will help, at least help us confront some of these issues. We're never going to sacrifice on quality. We're going to have a lot of eyes from the very beginning, from the point that we decide to make an offer to somebody, there is a lot of eyes on that candidate. And I think we can work successfully with the Civil Service Commission if we're allowed to go forward with this process. And I appreciate, in fact, Cindy doesn't know how much I appreciate, the questions that they ask us when we bring a new wrinkle to the process forward to them. It's always well, very well thought out. And, and, you know, I appreciate her endorsement of us and concerns that any future administrations might. I have, I have faith. I have faith that the personnel that we put in place, our upcoming leaders, will carry this on if we do a different process. But I think we're at a point, a critical point in hiring, and especially in law enforcement, where we need to embrace some changes for the health, the future health of the organization and the city. And that's the, our experiences have moved us to this point. Otherwise, we would not advocate for it if we didn't feel it was going to be a transparent, fair process and that there'd be oversight. And I think if we're allowed to move forward, I think we'll be able to explain a lot of those things to the Civil Service Commission and address some of those concerns with them directly.
There's, there's no question that there's a shortage, and there has been. The mayor keeps sending us ideas that he has that were, that are pretty darn good to consider and think about. And I've appreciated that. Yeah, I've appreciated that over the, over the months. But I will say this, because to me, it's a, it kind of crosses the boundary of, you know, I'm not desperate here. I'm not desperate at all. And I don't want our police department to be desperate because that word for me triggers that you're going to have substandard, you're going to lower the bar as far as what you, who you hire and the process you go through. So we're, we're not there by any means.
Oh, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't anyway.
No, I just, I just wanted to say, because that word was used earlier, and I just want to say, for this council member, you know, I'm not desperate. I'm trying to figure out ways that we can do better and that our hiring process can work better for us.
Absolutely. And we would never advance anything that we thought was going to lower the quality of the personnel that we'd bring on.
I agree. My biggest concern is that you've never asked for a special meeting. You say that you had to wait a month because they didn't meet. It doesn't sound like we've done everything that we could to advance lists. And I'm not blaming anybody. Don't get defensive. It just, it just rings hollow when I hear that we don't think we can call a special meeting. Any government body can call a special meeting.
Have, excuse me, we have called special meetings.
But Brad stood there and said, we didn't, I don't think we can call a special meeting. I've sit on their meetings. I've seen him reverse truck drivers and put them back on the list. I've seen him keep them off the list. I saw him take an officer off the list because your department didn't want him because of the background check. So I, you know, I have, I'll give them credit. They, they go to the meetings a lot more than I do, and they do, seem to do a pretty good job every time I'm there. So anyway, I, I think we beat this hurdle enough. I'm sure you got three votes. So let's call, I'm going to call for a separate roll call vote and we'll, we'll get it going.
O'Kane?
No.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. He has a resolution amending the position classification manual by adopting an updated job description for the accounting and reporting manager. C is a resolution amending the position classification manual by adding a paralegal and reclassifying the risk management manager coordinator to paralegal. Twelve are actions relating or authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to tennis courts unlimited for the Riverside Tennis Courts Pickleball Conversion Project. B is a resolution authorizing payment to KP Construction for the River Drive in Dakota Storm, Street Storm Sewer Repair Project. Thirteen are actions relating to property. A is a resolution inviting proposals for the sale of land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Agape Community Services and scheduling a hearing property at thirty-five oh one-twenty-eight Street. I need to abstain. I don't have a conflict, but I have a family members on the board. B is a resolution inviting proposals for permanent easement in certain land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area announcing the intent.
Quick question. If you abstain without a conflict, I'm not registering.
I said it is a conflict. I don't know that I have a personal conflict. I have a family members on the board which would be construed to have a conflict.
Sorry, I must have missed.
Yeah. Announcing the intent to accept the proposal of the Iowa Department of Transportation on scheduling a hearing for property at thirty-eight twenty Highway seventy-five North. Fourteen are purchasing, A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Marshall Bond pumps or air cylinders at the wastewater treatment plant. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to traffic control for malfunction management units and eco, eco no light Cobalt controllers for the Public Works Department. Gordon, I think your fifth street's still not right. I drove it Sunday. I don't think it was right again. Applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. Sixteen are applications for beer and liquor license. Seventeen boards and commission and commitment. Anyone to be heard on any of those items?
Oh, Dan. Sorry. Thanks.
Passes five zero other than, other noted votes throughout the deal. Recommendations of planning and zoning, eighteen's a hearing and ordinance amending twenty-five zero-two zoning districts and land uses and chapter twenty-five oh-three development standards to update requirements for residential development. I'll move that first reading.
Second?
Public hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Is it? I just have a quick question. This is planning zoning item, correct?
Yes.
They passed, they recommended approval with conditions. Are we adopting that condition about a limitation put in place that fourplexes are not included within the allowed residential districts?
Chris Madsen, senior planner, the ordinance in front of you would allow up to a fourplex in any residential zoning lot. The Planning and Zoning Commission did make their motion only allowing two, a duplex or a twin home.
They, they removed the fourplexes?
Correct.
Your motion doesn't include that?
Would our motion include their changes?
It would not. The ordinance in front of you would allow up to fourplex.
Oh.
If you want to agree with the planning commission, you'd have to make a motion removing that part of it.
I could make a motion to amend the mayor's main motion?
Well.
Wait a minute.
I, I think I understand what Dan's saying, and I want to make sure that I understand the justification or what they're, because I read it and I somewhat understand where they were going. But can you explain a little bit about that concern with the fourplex or...
Currently, there's four zoning districts that would not allow a twin home or a duplex. And there are five zoning districts that would not allow up to a four-unit townhome. Staff's recommendation is to allow a, up to a four-unit townhome in every residential zoning district. The commission thought that was a little bit too much, so they reduced it down to only allowing the duplex or twin home.
Still based on lot size, right?
We're not changing the lot size requirements, correct. So those would still have to be met.
So what's...
So we are voting to agree with you, your department, to allow fourplexes.
Correct. Unless you make a motion to...
What's offensive about a triplex or a fourplex as opposed to a duplex? I know you didn't, that's not your deal, but I guess I wonder why that's...
What argument?
Huh?
Well, I, yeah, I want to know that.
How many units are in your building?
In mine?
Aren't they connected?
Yes.
How many?
There's eleven total.
No, but in one row?
Oh, six in one and five in another.
And they're all connected?
Yes.
I just don't find that offensive, but I, I don't know why the planning and zoning would. What was their...
They didn't really go into a lot, the ones who voted no originally, didn't really go into a lot of detail. They just thought that was too dense in a residential district.
I don't know. I don't find those units personally. I don't, I wouldn't care if they were next door to me. I wouldn't, that wouldn't bother me, but...
Or seems to be the trend, and we've somewhat modeled our ordinance off of what Minneapolis recently did. So that seems to be what a lot of cities are going to, to promote different types of housing in their communities.
But could you get variances for the land, the, the size of the land, the, what the parcel is to put a fourplex on it? You could, you could certainly go to the Board of Adjustment for that, I would think.
Variance would be difficult to get. We do have a site plan process and a minor modification process. Or there are a couple of different processes to reduce that number. You wouldn't be able to completely get rid of it in any process unless we looked at a different code amendment in the future.
I'll still make a motion to amend it. Probably won't even get a second after this discussion, but I can see where the P and Z is coming from with it.
Second, until we can vote on it.
Shaner?
No.
Scott?
No, I'd just like to be on the winning side once in a while, so I have a...
Waters? Moore?
I have a funny feeling on how the mayor feels most of the time. Yes.
O'Kane?
It's not as painful as, as I thought.
Now, go ahead. We'll vote on the regular motion because the hearing is closed.
Man, you just asked for that one.
Who are we waiting for?
Councilwoman Shaner. Thank you. Thanks for calling me out, Mayor.
Passes five zero. Is anybody opposed waiving the statutory rule? If you are, say so. It won't matter.
No, I'm not opposed.
I'll move the sta, I'll move to waive the rules.
Second?
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
I'll move, I'll move second and third.
Second?
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Nineteen's hearing and ordinance rezoning thirty-seven hundred Jefferson Street. The petitioner's Dolph Ivener. I'll move it, but I'm not sure I'm going to vote for it because I've got some questions. Do you have a map on the, there?
Second.
Planning and zoning commission did hear this item and did recommend approval unanimously. There were a couple residents from the Leeds neighborhood that did attend in opposition to the rezoning.
Well, it's behind residences, right? I thought the lot went more north and south, but it goes east and west. Is there anybody here to be heard, by the way? The hearing's open.
Just Dolph.
Paul.
Well, that's fine. You can come speak for it.
My name's Dolph Ivener. I was report, I live at thirty-four hundred Talbot Road. I was approached by Knife River for, as you can see, that facility or that piece of ground. They're looking to move their current facility is not quite large enough, and they're looking to move there. There's a pretty good buffer between all the neighbors. Even on residential, you have a railroad track running through your backyard as it is. It's on the other side of the railroad track. Plus, the city is going to be working, doing a, a water detention pond. So basically, all of the residential homes on the west side, not only will have the railroad track buffer plus the walkway buffer, plus then there'll be another hundred, over a hundred or a hundred fifty feet wide ditch dug. So they're hundreds of feet from...
But there needs to be hundreds of feet because they're going to do crushing.
Yes, there will be.
And you do crushing, alls I get are phone calls and phone calls. Crushing does not need to be in a neighborhood. You crush, I mean, I'll ask you guys, you want a crushing yard within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of your house on a windy day? Because I don't think you do. And that's what you're telling me, about two-hundred feet plus or minus?
Well, it's more than two-hundred feet.
Huh?
Let's pull up, let's pull up and see what it is. The distance.
I'm all for trying to find a place for them. I think they should buy headed and we should move headed. It's a terrible place for it, but then there's aren't houses around it. You got a river to the back of it. And the ballparks belong on your property, quite frankly, in my opinion, but I don't know what, I don't know the size of your property. But I don't, I just, dirt, barrel pits and crushing are the two things that get neighbors going more than anything, and, and I'm not so sure they shouldn't. Well, that's your vote. Now, I'm only going to be responsible for the ones I made.
Sorry.
One issue at a time.
...for the width of your detention pond?
I would have to defer to engineering. I don't know what the design...
Gordon, do you know how big that detention pond's going to be out there at the splash?
You know, and I live on a gravel road, so I basically have a crush in front of my house all the time.
I'd lived on one for a lot of years and paid a lot of money to get it paved.
Gordon Ferris, city engineer. No, the pond that we're looking at is beyond the south end, and it would be, I do believe it's the full width of the property down there.
Yeah, but it's not going to... It comes all the way down that side as an open...
Oh, the current, the current drainage system does go down through the...
The current drainage, but there's going to be, you have a design to create a...
A basin.
A basin, and the basin runs where it comes out from the commercial space all the way down the side. It's an open...
Yes, it's, it's a ditch. It'd be an open ditch down to the...
Hundred feet wide?
Sorry, what?
Hundred feet wide?
I couldn't tell you. I don't have the plans memorized, so that, I can look that up.
So there's two hundred, so you are three hundred feet from it. And it's a little north of a hundred feet wide. And so you're three hundred feet from it. You have land that's localized. I mean, the biggest issue with these guys is you want them to go to, because they want to be somewhat centralized. So I'm sure they'll go, you know, the next option for them is maybe keep going further north, up Highway seventy-five, and then get out of the county, go into the county, go to the next county. So I mean, we have a piece of ground that's right there, there up the street.
How much of that land would be used for that? Like, I'm trying to imagine their footprint, because I wonder then if like that part of the operation could be moved, I guess, I think it's south. I'm trying to, yeah, orient myself, yeah. If you move it south at least, then, then it would be, you know, more, as far away from, you know, the residential side of it as you can, as opposed to the very far north neck of that property, I guess is what I'm asking. I'm not as opposed, but I could understand why people would have that concern. So I just wondered what part of that would be possible, is my question.
I would note, if it does make council more comfortable, you could require a site plan to come back as well.
Yeah, that's...
Plant and zoning did that as a condition, in your right of.
Planning and zoning did. Council can make that condition as...
So is that going to be required?
No, not unless you make a motion.
If you make it a condition, otherwise it would only go to the planning commission.
Right, that's what has to go to planning commission.
What's, what's a site plan?
Unless we move it. It doesn't have to go. We have to move it.
Correct.
Just like the last item. We had to, so...
Well, would that be so bad?
Dan, what was the commission, or the...
Condition? That the site plan comes back to the planning and zoning commission for approval. It was a four oh vote, four oh one.
Chris, wrinkle, Knife River Midwest, twenty-two twenty Hawkeye Drive. So what were the questions that you folks had?
Well, I think that makes the most sense. Then I forgot, or I must have missed that that was, it was contingent upon that. Would you be opposed to come back to planning and zoning with that site plan so at least we could see the layout? And what I'm urging you to think about with the site plan is the further you could have this south and east, you know, oh, the crushing part or the part that would be most negatively impacting neighbors, you know, have that as far away from residential as possible, just the layout of the property. Would you be opposed to at least producing that?
No, not at all. I mean, we would do a site plan anyway. And I don't know how much background you want here. I could...
Please, no.
Kind of how we got to this point and why we're looking at it. So we've been, the current size of our yard is probably fourteen to fifteen acres, and we've been working with Mike Collette, with the city, to try to purchase some adjacent land. Because recently, just full disclosure, because of our operations and the size of our yard, like our, the storm requirement requirements, in order to meet the standards that we need, we need a detention pond there. So we, we basically don't have the room. Just given...
Because it would take the land that you need for your operation. Yeah.
But we have land out there that they, you've got land right in the middle of the ballparks that you could make a detention pond. It doesn't have to be on site.
Well, we have to route all the water from our current parcel over to that where any sediment could, could drain out and then get it to another drainage area, but that parcel isn't contiguous, you know, where we can get water over to that parcel.
Well, okay.
But, yeah, I mean...
It would be additional steps, but it's possible.
Yeah, if, if we had the ball fields, let's say, or, or some of those ball fields, could we make it? And we've discussed that. But it's just, I mean, we've, we've been, tried to purchase those for probably twenty years. And it, you know, and we're, we've been working with Mike and we met with Marty Doherty as well. Like, what would be the best options in the city if we did decide to relocate? We looked at that, the, the parcel that the city purchased there at a hundred and tenth street.
That was no good?
Well, he felt like they, they wanted more, like hotels or something. They didn't figure that was probably the best option.
Yeah, the best use of that part. No, I understand.
Better for that than it is a hotel, but Marty and I don't agree on that one. But that's okay, because those guys think of the different world than I do. Mine's a little more practical.
I hadn't heard about that.
So, I mean, we also looked at down at South Bridge, which I think we would be a good fit down there. But the problem is it's so far south, just all of our trucking caught and all of our aggregate comes from the north. And then we'd have to truck everything back up to the north. So, I mean, it would be, make us...
You have to pass that expense along.
Yeah, less competitive, and we have competitors. So we're looking for something a little more centrally located. And this one here, we'd have good access to Highway seventy-five. I mean, we'd, we'd come out there on, I think, what is that, Jefferson there? And then, and then you have great access to Highway seventy-five, you know, outer belt.
You're, just a minute. You're going to, Jefferson is way down here. You're planning on trying to get...
Excuse me, up there, up to the north.
Forty-first, forty-first, forty-first.
Excuse, I apologize.
Because I was going to say, if you're trying to get out of Jefferson, that's not going to work.
So they're at forty-first.
Yeah.
And I think they're putting new infrastructure in there. They just redid or, or working on the road there, replacing water. And our plan would be, so obviously, this has enough area for us, enough for the detention pond. We'd put in, we're looking at putting in a new ready-mix plant there. It would be an aggregate yard. You know, like as far as crushing, currently, we crush concrete and asphalt in our yard in Sioux City, but we, it's probably like we do it for a period, we bring in a third party to do the crushing, and it's probably like two weeks in the spring and two weeks in the fall. So it's not like we're continuously crushing.
A daily...
But yes, we would at times crush those recycled products. All the other, like virgin aggregate sand rock would, would come in by truck or possibly in the future by rail. So...
I understand that, but you, with, even with the conditional use permit, it says you can crush, which means you can crush whenever you feel like it. And I'm just telling you, those, I'm, I'm not...
That it makes people... Yes, I get where you're coming from. I mean, I, I totally understand.
And I got to live out in this neighborhood, so you got the wrong guy today.
No, I, I totally get it.
Well, and I, I'm just, I, I would just say, I hope you know that it's like, I'm not insensitive to that either. I want to understand and level with the people of Leeds that would have this in their backyard, that I would want to make sure that the council was advocating for them, whether we live in that neighborhood or not. But I would, I'm more comfortable talking and if I would see a site plan and having you hear these concerns, I think you as a company, as, as a good corporate partner, which you are, I think you, you would certainly have a desire to try to make this work as well for those residents and do everything you could to accommodate that.
Most definitely, yeah. I mean, the last thing we want is a bunch of people calling
Complaining about you.
The city complaining, because, I mean, it's going to come right back to us and...
So are you going to keep your existing yard?
Uh, we would do, we would transition probably over, I would say, a three or four-year period because obviously getting the site ready and getting things up and running, I mean, it's not like we would shut down our operations on Hawkeye Drive one day and then be able to go here the next. So it would be a process, like I would think over three or four years, like we might, you know, obviously get the site work done and then, then maybe move, you know, set up the ready-mix plant. And then next, you know, so I, it would definitely come in stages. And we mills, we, we may still keep the property on Hawkeye because we have our office there and some shops. So we may keep that and maybe use that as our recycle yard.
Well, I can't imagine you're going to move the asphalt operation up there, but maybe you are.
Well, I mean, we're looking at, you know, our, the age of our asphalt plant and kind of where it's at, it's been discussed that it may be time for a new plant, something a little more stated to the art. We've also looked at, one of the things we're looking at is, I mean, this would provide us enough room to put a solar array in to like power the asphalt and ready-mix plant with a solar array.
You know a guy?
I was going to say, what are you like, you trying to get the price down or something here? Come on now.
A lot of electricity in the summer time. Makes sense, and the land where it is makes sense.
So, I mean, in other, there are other asphalt plants in Iowa, like Norris has one that's run by solar power. And a lot of companies are doing that. And like I said, the detention pond, there's a lot of environmental things. I'm not saying we're not meeting environmental requirements now, but it's only going to get more stringent. And we, we obviously want to make sure we're exceeding, because, I mean, things are, you know, getting tougher and tougher on that front. And we want to be good, good neighbors. But, I mean, I get it, yeah. I mean, we're, and we're going to have trucks running in and out of there too. I think that was one of the concerns that was brought up.
I can understand that. It's very narrow up at that end.
You know, and the majority of our trucks would be headed back towards the east, but I think one of the concerns that was brought up by one of the residents is, well, if the trucks go west, well, yeah, if we're paving in Leeds or we have a project there, or we would certainly, some trucks, you know, would go back to the west. But, so there is additional truck traffic.
I got a, I have a couple of questions for you. And I appreciate that background. It was, it's helpful. What are your typical hours of operation of whether it's crushing or trucks coming and going?
Yes.
What, what are your hours?
So I would say like trucks coming and going would probably be around six-thirty, seven start time. Ready-mix, it might be a little earlier, especially in the hot days of the summer. And then, you know, it could go to six, seven o'clock. But like in the spring, we're, we're starting later, getting done, you know, earlier. Fall, same thing. So it kind of varies. Like this time of year, we could be running, you know, eleven hours, eleven and a half hours, twelve hours. In the fall, it might be, you know, eight, nine hours. Spring, same thing. And then in the winter, we're pretty much shut down. So from around Thanksgiving to April first, not going to see a whole lot of traffic.
Okay. What about the crushing operations?
So the crushing operations, the only crushing we do in our yard currently is our recycled asphalt and concrete. So we'll stockpile up some material and then we'll hire like a Steve Schmelin or, you know, a third-party crusher to come in and crush that pile. So we may have, let's say, a twenty thousand ton pile. They'll crush whatever, two thousand ton a day. So, yeah, ten days, like two weeks, three weeks, depending on the size of the pile. And then we do that like twice a year. So...
He's not bringing in material.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm like, we're not going to be crushing like continuously there. Like if you, if you drive by our yard... Like, if you, if you drive by our yard in Hawkeye, you'll see piles there, but there's probably a crusher there four weeks out of the, the year.
Yeah, that's how everybody does it.
Yeah, I mean, cause we wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't make economic sense to just leave a crusher there.
Um, but if you're willing to do the site plan and have that go to plan and zoning, I, I think that'd be beneficial for all of us.
Yeah. And that was our, I mean, that's our plan to develop this, cause we're gonna have, we'll likely probably hire DGR to do the site plan and kinda the layout of the, the yard. Cause obviously, we've got the detention pond, we'll have to work with Gordon and his team on, you know, the, the, the city's plans. So, I mean, it's gonna take some time, but.
I have some questions for Chris. Uh, in your report, Chris, is, I, I know there's a difference, but I just wanna know if you intentionally talked about light industrial and heavy industrial? Is that, that's gone away with the new zoning code, hasn't it? Didn't we used to have light industrial areas versus heavy?
Correct. Now, we just have general industrial and business park or two more industrial.
What's this considered, what would this be considered as?
The request would be for heavy industrial, which is a use under the general industrial zoning district.
Okay. And then you point out the environmental effects in your report. It, it talks about noise, light, odor, vibration, and other visible and sensory impacts. Are you able to deal, how, how do you deal with that or how do you handle that in a-
On a complaint.
On a site plan, but you handle that-
On a site plan? The issue is, you know, if we receive a complaint from any of the neighbors, then we would, staff would go out and investigate, whether it be planning staff or environmental, investigate the site and remedy as needed.
So, I, I'll go my third complaint that I get. And, and it's you and my friend Bill, when you fire those babies up in the spring, the calls never stop for like two weeks. Mr. Padmore, am I right?
Yep.
And that's a real problem in that whole valley. And, yeah, I, you can't do anything about it, but now we're gonna move you closer to two thousand people. That's, that's a real concern for me. It doesn't get out of that valley. That, that smell stays right there and comes downtown. And your, your friend Dave Bernstein complains about it, and it's, it's those plants that are doing it, so.
Plants where?
When they fire up their plants in the spring, we get all kinds of complaints because they're burning off, I suppose, the stuff that sit around all winter and didn't, and it, it's, it's very-
Smelly.
Very heavy, smelly air. There's no nice way to say it. It doesn't last all summer, but we get lots of complaints.
So, Chris, what would be the procedure here? Do we, do we want to, to, uh, defer this pending the site plan? And have it come back both together after plan and zoning has looked at the site?
You just make an amendment to make sure that the site plan's included, cause you have to do that.
Does that come back to council?
It will come.
After plan and zoning has it, or can they-
Planning and zoning didn't make it part of their motion that they would review it. If you also wish to review, then that would have to be part of your motion.
I think we should. I, I think we should.
I would appreciate it.
You would?
Okay. Okay. Was a motion been made yet?
The main motion.
Main motion, you'll have to make a motion to amend.
I'm a little gun shy about that now.
Well, try it.
Give it a go.
Okay.
Just to embarrass you, but I'll say.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That's all I need. Um, that's true, you guys, it's true. I will make a motion to amend the main motion to include that a site plan would be reviewed by the Plan and Zoning Commission and their review and conclusion would, and recommendations would be, would be forwarded to the city council, for the city council to review and approve at a public hearing. Is that okay?
Second.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
I.
I didn't vote for the main motion.
Oh, yeah.
But thanks, thanks for agreeing to do the-
Anyone else be heard on the main motion?
Oh.
As amended.
Councilman Moore, I think you hit that twice.
Tried to give you two votes.
You only get a vote.
I only get one vote.
He fell so strongly.
You only get to cancel me out once, not twice.
He did it one for his amendment, an extra one.
Thank you, Julie.
It passes four to zero to one, or four to one, I vote no. And I would, would not want to waive the rules. I do want people that live in that neighborhood to have a chance to come in and say something if they wanna. Twenty's a hearing in the ordinance, free zoning, thir-, six thirteen, fifteen, Thirteenth Street, and six seventeen, Nineteenth, Thirteenth Street. The petitioner's Laura Garcia Luna. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we clarify that for them to make sure the petitioner understands? I think they do, but, so we just did the first reading, back on, I'm back on-
That we did the first reading, it'll come back next week for second, maybe third, but it'll come back next week.
Okay.
Mr. William Cole, did you understand that part? It, it was passed, but just the first reading. So, if you want to come back next week, just in case there are other citizens that would wanna come forward and have questions, that might be helpful. So, the first reading passed four to one, but we didn't pass the second and third. So, it could come back, or it will come back for sure next week. Um, but possibly then one more after that, just to give citizens in that neighborhood a chance to come forward if they wish.
Yeah, the hearing's been closed. It's just a matter of doing second and third, but still-
Dan, Dan just wanted to make sure that you heard that, yeah.
Twenty passes five zero. Uh, is there anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? I'll move that.
Second.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Twenty-one's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the wastewater treatment plant, short-term improvement project. I'll move it.
Second.
Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty-two's a hearing on, on appeal of Mike Byal, Byal, regarding the removal up from the Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustments. Is Mike here? I haven't seen him. So, well, what do we do now? Move to, uh, deny the appeal?
I would vote to.
You would vote it up or down, or yeah?
Public hearing is now open, yeah.
We don't have a motion or a-
Um, okay, I'll move it. I thought I did, okay.
Second.
Hearing's now open.
Do you wish for staff to present any of the information contained attached to the RCA regarding the letter sent from Planning and Zoning?
I think they've done a great job of telling us who, why, but-
I guess my, my only question was with this appeal process or this, the explanation of what this would be. It was made clear to the individual to come and present the appeal, right? Not just the, not just to submit the appeal.
Correct. We did reach out to the petitioner prior to the meeting and reminded him. He did say that he would be here.
So, if we wanna uphold the staff, how do we vote?
Um.
I think we vote nay.
You'd make a motion to deny the appeal. That would be my recommendation.
Or we-
Can we just vote?
We made a motion to hear it, so we'd still have to vote on, okay, that doesn't make sense.
There isn't a real great, clear procedure related to this. Um, he appealed it to the council and the council couldn't take action or deny.
So, then we, do we withdraw this and, you're not, I mean, we made a motion. Somehow we gotta vote on this.
We made a motion for the hearing, right?
Um, yeah, you could vote the, vote to close the hearing and then vote up or down to deny the.
Okay, I'll, I'll call the question on the, the, the hearing that we moved.
Yep.
And Scott.
Vote aye, we've heard the hearing. Now, we'll make a motion after this, is what you're saying, correct?
No, I think she's saying it.
Oh, yes. The motion is to close the hearing, then there will be a motion on whether to deny or approve the appeal.
Right.
Okay. Waters. Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
I'll move to deny the appeal. Second.
Waters. Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Twenty-three's an ordinance amending chapter twenty point zero five entitled Housing Maintenance Code to Increase the Rental Fee Permit Schedule. First consideration was approved on June, or July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. I'll move second reading.
Second.
Anyone to be heard? Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
No.
Move it.
Second.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye. I'll move third reading.
Second.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Another ten dollars, Darrell, from the old Scott family to the city, but don't you worry about it. Twenty-four's a resolution, amending resolution twenty twenty-four dice zero two seven seven relating to the termination of the lease agreement with Lamb Arts for the use of the property at four seven Market Street by granting an additional time to vacate the premises. I'll, I can't move that. Go ahead. I'll move it.
Second.
Go ahead.
Katie Colling, thirty sixty-five Valley Drive. Um, I'm just here to answer questions if you have any, um, except to express our deep gratitude. We are in good shape to comply with everything and be out by the end of September.
The, the extension to September thirtieth will be subject to the certificate of insurance, which came in today.
Yeah.
Amber, I don't know if you've seen that, but I, but I sent it to, uh, Nicole and pointed out that it goes to September seventeenth. So, if we go past that, you'll have to renew it to September thirtieth. And then there are three other conditions on the, on the, um, approval. If it goes that way is, is keeping the crowns, grounds in the building secure.
Yes.
And to maintain the grounds, including mowing and weed control. If you'd please do that on the last day that you're walking away from the billing, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Cause the last guy didn't. Not, not your property.
And I, and I guess the third one was the certificate of insurance.
Yes.
Complied with that by submitting it. It has all the language on it that we needed, I think.
I believe so, yes.
Amber Higgin, the Assistant City Attorney, I reviewed the certificate of insurance and it did include the million dollars general liability, naming the city as an additional insured. In addition, I did receive an email, um, from Russ Willey that informed me that I believe both Lamb Arts and Morningside College have signed a, an agreement for storage that they can access beginning the-
Well, they can start moving in Monday next week.
Okay.
And already, we'll be ready to.
Katie, um, I have been contacted, uh, by a couple of individuals regarding this, just asking about the extension and what the thoughts were, how things were going. And I was pretty transparent with them, as I will be with you, that, um, I think, look, I'm a big fan of Lamb Arts and what they're doing. I even truly appreciate the partnership with Morningside University. I think it's going well. Um, and I certainly want to extend great, um, to allow them to get their things out of there in, in a manner in which is respectful of the property. I don't want it done in haste. I understand that. However, I will say that I think that the city has been very generous with their time, um, and allowing that process, giving multiple extensions. And so, I, to those individuals, I said what I would be comfortable with was to September third. I thought that gives you roughly another month and it even gets you through Labor Day, uh, weekend. I understand it's not the entire time, but I, again, I think that we've been generous up until this point and that was about, that was about the, all my generosity could, could afford was through that. And, and that's just me. I mean, there are others that might feel all the way till the end of September is necessary or, you know, justified. But I just wanted you to at least know that was the conclusion that I reached, that at some point in time, we are going to have to put our foot down. And I think we've been really hesitant to do so thus far.
Well, we, we do beg your indulgence. Um, it has, it's been, um, full of, of, uh, pit stops and, and, uh, diversions, but, um, they've worked diligently. In fact, they needed every single day to find the right, um, storage unit, storage agreement. Um, the day they agreed with Coffee King was the day they received a letter from Amber, uh, from the city attorney's office. So, um, it really, I mean, every day was used. Uh, and now all the logistics have been carefully put in place, um, uh, to move everything so that both Morningside and Lamb Arts can access what they need, when they need it. Um, they've got the, uh, U-Haul trucks rented, so it's all systems go. Um, but it is going to be a logistical plan that they, if it all goes smoothly, getting to the end of September will be the time that they need.
And I, and I support September thirtieth. I understand what you're saying, Alex, but I don't remember the years now. But I wanna say Lamb Theater's been there thirty-eight out of their forty-four years of existence. I mean, a long time. And we had, we had that relationship for a long time. And, you know, there's a lot of personal property to move. And, and there were a lot of challenges to get to where you are today. Had we known that, um, I think Julie Shaner, uh, council member, Shaner had, had talked about, well, let's extend it to this date. And we thought it was reasonable, but we didn't realize you're gonna be running into all these challenges that you have before you. So, I would like to say September thirtieth, because I've been assured by your group and I've been assured by Taylor, who's really great to work with at Morningside, that they will make that date, so.
They've got a really solid-
You've got a good plan.
Set, set motion.
I can just support it and be very comfortable with it.
I appreciate that. I think the, the biggest concerns that I had personally were with regards to the insurance, carrying insurance to make sure that, you know, it, it is insured. My, the second concern, which is what I heard from people in the neighborhood, was just about the state of the grounds, because if nobody's there day to day, obviously, people are gonna start abusing that fact. And there, there have been a number of like lean-to shelters that have been set up around the property and there has been litter on the property, things like that. Um, if you're-
We have a guy for that now.
And if you're, if you're in the process of removing things from the building, I think that increase in activity there is gonna help to deter some of that. Um, the only thing that I would ask is as you continue to, um, clean things out and move things out into the, into the new place, make sure that you, uh, really partner with our law enforcement. If, oh, just, just to make sure that we're keeping individuals that should be steered away from the park, steered away from the park.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions or?
The rule?
Moore.
Vote on here.
This is to the thirtieth.
The thirtieth, yeah.
It's-
We voting here? Where are we voting?
Oh.
Nobody amended, correct?
No.
Okay, then it is electronic.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Thank you.
Ask person.
I abstain. Water's votes no. It passes three to zero. Any citizens to be heard, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll go to council concerns. Matthew?
Well, last Thursday, I had the honor and the privilege to get to attend, uh, the Explorers game and watch J.D. Sholton, um, throw out pitches against, um, the Salt Dogs. And we won. That was an event that was hosted by our Sioux City Library. Um, they recently had, um, their summer reading program conclude. And students that participated in that were able to get Explorers tickets and attend the game for free. Uh, it was great to get to be a part of that. It was even better beating the Salt Dogs. Um, unfortunately, the next day is when the Explorers bus caught fire. Luckily, nobody was hurt in that, but that was a-
J.D.'s cap that was on its way to Cooperstown has burn marks on it now. But it's still on its way to Cooperstown today.
Yep. Before the game, I thought about texting him to bring the fire, but that's not. But he did, he did amazing pitching for the Explorers.
But he did, he did amazing pitching for the Explorers, so it was, it was a, it was really great to see them shut them down as often as they did, cause the Salt Dogs are not a, not a new team by any means, so. Um, Tuesday is National Night Out. National Night Out is uh the yearly event that we all split up as council members. So as a reminder, if you are going to the National Night Out and you see one of us, but not all of us, we do that intentionally. We all kind of pick different parks, I'm sure you're gonna hear from everybody else about what park they'll be at. Um, I will be at Riverside Park, uh, or Riverside, which is actually gonna be at Riverside Lutheran and then Radiant Life on West First for the West Side Park one. Um, other than that, Friday, we have the Sulan Splash Groundbreaking, and that's everything I've got for you this week.
I think Julie's gonna be at Leeds.
Yep.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Yeah, um, I don't have a lot, I just wanted to say, yeah, I'm really looking forward to National Night Out. I also believe, I don't see anyone from Parks and Rec, I was trying to remember, but I didn't have a chance to look on my um, phone or calendar. I think that the pooch paddle is tonight and tomorrow at the pools, is that correct? Does anyone know?
The what?
Where they allow the dogs to go out.
Oh, I don't know.
Thought it was close.
That's usually the last day or two.
Don't tell me summer's over. Pools.
Maybe I'm wrong, don't quote.
I don't, yeah.
Check it out, Parks and Rec Facebook, I think it's coming up, so I'm looking forward to tomorrow's, or yeah, for night out, so that's all I have.
Okay, uh, just a couple of things, so for National Night Out, I'll be at Riverside Lutheran Church with Matthew and then Saint John Lutheran Church on Jackson Street. I wanna thank Matthew for representing the council so well um, at the Food Bank um, distribution of food at, in Riverside. And not only did Matthew work hard, but his kids worked hard and the group you had there was just unbelievably hard workers. And they were loading up the trucks and loading up the cars, so.
There was another really good volunteer, Dan Moore.
I was a photographer.
Loaded up his car for an individual.
Well, as he was walking, I didn't want him to carry all that, so.
For yourself short.
So that was a real success and I was, I was really glad to see that at Riverside. Um, what else, I had one other thing and I can't remember it now. Except it's nice to be back, I guess I was back last week, but it's nice to be back this week for some reason, so. Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, I'll be at Dale Park and I'm gonna try to get to either Latham or Leeds, one, to get to two of them, so.
I didn't mention it and Bob looked it up for me, so I appreciate it, the pooch paddle is next Monday, um, but next Monday and it's cause I think it's different dogs or different sizes.
The twelfth and the thirteenth?
I guess, that's what we looked up.
Well, they'll be closing pretty soon, cause school will be started.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, I'm sure.
They've shut down everything but Riverside.
And then the other thing, yeah, that I would just mention, I'll be at Latham as well as Saint Mark Lutheran Church, so I'm looking forward to it.
Yep.
We'll go to Latham first, then I can go and you won't be there and.
Deal.
I'll go to, I'll go to Dale first.
Six of five.
All right, move adjourned, second.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner. Scott.
Aye.
Water.
Aye.
It's not that I don't wanna see it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.